Do we have any?
Can you hear us now, Jackson? Or, oh, look, we have an audience.
Martha, there is no audio. Your four minutes can.
It was the button. Can you hear me now?
Now she can hear you.
So it was just the button. I muted it and then unmuted it and it.
Oh, so we have Apple care on that thing?
It's, it's an echo though, through what I'm hearing.
But maybe if you hang up the phone, it'll be better.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna try one more time and then have her text me.
Okay, I will do that. Yep, all right, very good. Give that, yep, bye-bye. She's asked that you recap on what was just discussed.
Okay.
Can we get, can we get confirmation from you, Jackson, that you can hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
We are now able to hear you. I texted Ms. Ashroll when the meeting started. We weren't able to hear you until you reset it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
See, I try to be polite and have my phone facing down, so it's not a distraction. I gotta leave it like this now.
Okay, so a quick recap for the meeting minutes. Not my tone. We determined that 303 was, the 3.3 compensatory time was, by the way, we had left it. We had renamed 3.4 workday hours, rest and meal periods at the last meeting. And we had conversations specific to call and pay, to potentially allow for flex time. What trustee Sweattick had recommended was to utilize the call and pay language from, is it the patrolman's contract? The police patrolman's contract that will be inserted into section 3.2 overtime. In between the sentence, "All overtime work by non-exempt employees must be authorized in advance by department head and/or trustee." This is more specific then to, to emergency overtime. Then we will include the new call and pay language from the police contract. And then the next paragraph, paragraph or sentence would be hours actually worked include vacation time, holiday comp and six, so on and so forth. So we really didn't get much done. I apologize for the issue at hand. It seems that the iPad just needed to be rebooted as far as the mute button. So we are moving on now and having conversation specific to flexible and hybrid work. And seeing if we want to have any type of language that with regard to flexible and hybrid work for personal and professional needs. And trustees are kind of in agreement that that would be on a as-needed basis, specific to illness or something of that nature. And I think if everyone's in agreement, we will move forward to 3.5 time sheets. Which I think we actually just eliminated at the last meeting. Based on our conversation to create sheets instead of cards and the language prior to.
Yeah, I thought we discussed this earlier, so.
We changed it to time sheets and said, "Non-exempt employees are required to keep an record and complete record of their attendance and hours worked." Time sheets are official business records. And that's the end of that paragraph.
Okay, because I had it crossed off. So maybe I had done that prematurely.
I think you crossed it off when we were talking about it a couple of sessions ahead of time. Because we were talking about the time clocks.
And then we changed it in 3.1 to reflect sheets instead of clocks and track instead of punch. Okay, so we're gonna keep the language, but we're gonna remove cards and make it sheets.
Correct.
So we're moving on to 3.16 payroll deductions. Are you still on 3.16?
It's 3.6.
You're right, I'm sorry, 3.6 payroll deductions. And is that what you're attributing it to in your draft?
Yeah, payroll deductions is 3.6.
All right, so does anyone have any changes here? My, I have Martha's changes, and this is not reflected in hers, but I do. Towards the bottom of that paragraph, it says, "Insert appropriate person or titles here," and I would just ask that we insert the fiscal officer.
I put the township fiscal officer.
Perfect. Any other conversation on this section? Department heads?
No.
Suzanne? Okay, so we're gonna go to 3.7 wage garnishment. Any changes here?
They changed "we" to the township. Everywhere. And then corrected the grammar for the. Verb is, has.
Okay. I'm not saying that, where is that part?
So the one township receives legal papers or garnish, and used to say "we" are required. Now it says the township is required.
Okay. Got it. I've got phones going, I just need to make sure that people can hear us. All right. Anything else in that section, or should we move on to 3.8 direct deposit?
3.8.
I have no changes in 3.8 trustees. All right, section four. Standards of conduct and employee performance. Any changes to 4.1 anti-grassment and discrimination?
I'm okay with it. I just changed the language from "we" to the township a couple of spots. First and second paragraph, third and fourth paragraph.
I see it.
Second and third.
Okay. Trustee Ashroll, any changes? I work going to names and pronouns, no changes there?
No.
Prohibited conduct, any changes there? I put a question mark by C.
C?
Yeah, I wonder if we need to say that. I think we kind of put ourselves in a bad light if we say that. If somebody doesn't use the right. Pronouns. But I guess this is more specific. I didn't see the prohibited conduct, maybe. This is more specific to prohibited harassment or discriminatory discrimination, including verbal, so that's. Find the way it is. Anyone else have any changes in this section before we move on to complaint procedure?
Well, do you want to change that title then to prohibited harassment? Says harassment and discrimination.
What do you want to change it to?
Anti, it's, right now it's anti-arrestment and discrimination. You would like to change it to prohibited?
No, what are you looking at?
I thought you were looking at 4.1, because that's the head of the whole section.
No, I was looking at the title of that paragraph. It seemed like you were confused about what was down there until you read the first paragraph.
Well, because just the way mine's set up, it's on a different page.
Yeah. Okay. Complaints?
Complaint procedure. Anyone have any changes there? Okay. All right, so we're moving on to attendance, 4.2, if everyone's in agreement. All right, um. I had just, in this section, one thing that I wasn't sure about, it says, I'm in the first paragraph. Third sentence, "If an employee desires to leave work for any reason during the workday, the employee must obtain the approval of his or her supervisor prior to leaving." And I know that we've had situations where. You can't get ahold of anybody, and if there's an emergency and you absolutely have to leave, we would just ask for, that you notify us. Because you can't necessarily wait all the time for a supervisor. Thoughts on that?
Employee must notify, instead of obtain the, notify. Because I get that, I mean, if you can't get in touch with someone.
And I would just say notify their supervisor, period. I would get rid of obtain the approval of his or her prior to leaving. And I would just say notify their supervisor, period. I would get rid of obtain the approval of his or her prior to leaving. I mean, I'm not thinking it's gonna happen often, but there are times when our staff members can't get ahold of any of the trustees. Mike's shaking his head. And do we want supervisor, or do we want department head and/or trustee liaison? What's?
I mean, I would say. I would think liaison. But I think when it's. It's gonna be situational, because Suzanne needs to leave and has to close down the office. I think it should just be a heads up to let all the trustees know in case we receive a phone call saying, "I'm at the office, it should be open right now," but Mike doesn't really need to do that to all three.
So that's why I was kind of recommending to the department head and/or trustee liaison. Because you'll have trustee, you'll have department heads that will have to go to a trustee liaison, but the rest of your staff would go to the department.
And I think, I think I tell you, like, if you've told me you need to leave early, I'm like, oh, maybe just shoot Jack and Melissa an email or a phone call.
Sure.
I thought you said just shoot.
Sorry, it's too long, too long of a pregnant boss there.
If I go to the post office, or if I go to the cemetery. And it's not here.
That's part of your job, though.
Right.
That's part of your job. Yeah.
Emergency happened, something happened to, you know, the family pet, you gotta go.
So that. Sentence, I think, would stay with changing department to department head and trustee liaison. But it should be prefaced with, except in a situation. Family emergency. Something like that. You know where I'm going with it, I just can't.
So do you want to keep obtain the approval of his or her?
Obtain the approval of their department head or trustee liaison. Prior to leaving. So you don't want to abandon ship, what?
I just think it's really being stringent.
I think so, too. I would just say, just notify us. I mean, we've been pretty. Because generally, there's someone else here. This is gonna happen in the service department, it's gonna happen here. There's somebody else generally here. There's Tom, there's Lynn, there, you know, you have a whole staff of three guys outside of you. So someone else will be able to handle things. It's not like the whole department's leaving.
Any guesses there? Reason, is there staff members that are coming and going that are abusive, that we would want to put more stringent?
Well. Not, that's coming to mind, however, we are right, we are working on this manual for the future. It's not always going to be the existing staff, and I think that's where, I think that's where Jack is going with it, is. You have to plan for five years from now, 10 years from now, the staff could look very different. So you want to make sure that you have this, these are the expectations in the manual.
No, when you're not here anymore, he goes, a bonehead in there, and it's like. Why I went home to watch General Hospital, I didn't.
Does anyone do that, Jack? How do you even know that name?
I didn't know I had to tell anybody.
General Hospital.
It's probably not.
Taking me way back.
Still online? These are the days of our lives.
That's a different one. Let's look at.
But I, I do think. I think notify instead of, because I mean, I know that Suzanne and Lynn have called me before, and I don't always pick up. Not because I'm screening my calls, by the way.
No.
It's, I mean, it's.
We can't be available all the time.
Yeah.
I'm just looking to see what the language was in the last one, but. You wouldn't know where that is in the old one, would you? Thought you had this thing memorized. Thank you. It doesn't say anything like that.
Does it say department head and/or liaison? Or trustee?
It talks, it doesn't, it doesn't touch on it. Wait. Nope, it's, it's about reporting to work on time, what an absentee looks like. Tardiness, excessive tardiness, and by the end of the payroll period, attendance records must be signed by each employee. It doesn't say anything about. Having to report. And not that it shouldn't have that in there, I'm just trying to look between the two.
So you want to just change it to the employee must notify the department head or trustee liaison?
Yes. That's what I had suggested.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, because I feel it gives us recourse, you know, if some, if we feel someone's abusing it.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, any other changes under attendance?
In the second paragraph, I changed the word workday to one word workday, as it should be.
Okay.
Then they want to, the fifth paragraph, excessive tardiness.
Yes.
That is a repeat. From the end of the first paragraph, so that should be deleted.
Okay.
I also had in that second paragraph. Required to record. Their time at the moment of arriving or departing for the workday and lunch period. I would take out and lunch period, because they don't do that. None of the time.
That's right.
Yes, that second paragraph, each employee is required to record or clock his time at the moment of arriving or departing from the workday period.
And just remove and lunch period.
We'll take out our clock, too.
Yes.
Well, that was my, what I was just gonna say is clock and time cards. So we would record on the time sheet. Just record his, his time, so or clock. In that paragraph. And then in the last paragraph, it would be time sheets.
So second paragraph, second sentence, "Each employee is required to record his time at the moment of arriving or departing for the workday period."
Period.
And what's the next one you just said?
You got rid of or clock, you said record.
Yeah.
And then the last paragraph.
By the end of payroll.
All attendance records, time sheets, we would just get rid of time cards, because we're doing the sheets now.
Okay.
That's all I have for that section. So are we moving to 4.3?
Yes.
Everyone's in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Sounds like we've got someone on the mic. I think that was Jackson. Okay, 4.3. Right off the bat, I highlighted this is my suggested language to replace categorizing offense. If the board would like to change it back to the descriptions, I can quickly make that change. I'll be honest with you. I liked how it was set up in the old one. Let's have to find it. Which was page 22 of the old. I don't even know. There's so many versions of this, Jack. And the other thing is, we had a section called progressive discipline, that I'm not seeing it here at all. So the progressive discipline in the old said, "The progressive discipline policy established here, herein is advisory only. It does not create a just cause standard for termination from employment. Levels of this discipline may be, they vary based on the facts and circumstances of the conduct." And I'm wondering if we have a progressive discipline policy. Or if this is it underneath. I looked at the acceptable use policy that Martha gave us, and I didn't see it in there. Are you seeing it, Jack? 4.0?
In.
The old, page 22? Because it says the progressive discipline policy. But it says established herein, and I don't know if that means it's, in my mind, it means it's what's following. This category of offenses, category one examples, category two. That's, that's the policy, because it says. Has been established herein, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have a policy somewhere that we had to keep this section.
So are you saying, like, kind of take that from the old? Like, the, the level one, level two, level three? Add that into it. I, I agree, I like that from the old one.
Yeah.
For the categories.
I, I would not be opposed to it.
Which would essentially, like, remove this entire 4.3. And bring the other one over.
Yeah. And it jumps to pre-disciplinary conference, which is 4.5, page 25 of the old, so it's almost three pages of. But when I've had to utilize this handbook for disciplinary nature, it really has been helpful to say, these are examples. That's it. And. It's been a great guide.
So it is, what's in, what's in the current manual is our policy. It's not that we have something.
That's what I was.
This is the new one. Are you in the old one?
This is, is this the one we're working on right now?
This is, this is the one that, yeah, this is the new one. This is the old one, correct?
That's really, this is the one you're talking about. This is the one that I've been typing.
This is the old one. Page 22, section 4.0. Progressive discipline. I just like how it's laid out.
This is the one I have.
That she gave us?
No, from the beginning of the year. Which was the most, but anyway, it's, it's section. Four, progressive discipline.
Yes. And then does it have this breakdown category of, yes.
Example, no wait, category one. To.
You've got it, perfect.
So we want to import all that.
I like that, it's just my opinion.
Now, there were some markups in that.
Let me go grab mine.
There were. Excuse me. Um. Because what you're, what we're seeing in this old one, I should wait, I'm gonna wait till she comes back.
In the. Old one, whoever made the edits, put in.
I see what they did.
Times.
Kind of like that, because what happens, we'll talk about it. You guys are all getting texts. Completely different topic. Who brought in the tree skirt?
I'm sorry?
The tree skirt. Okay, we halted our conversation. We were gonna have further conversations, but we wanted to wait for you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, so. I don't like how it's so simple, A throughout, on the new version. Jack, what were you saying about the time limits on the old?
I said whoever did the edits in this old one, put in time limits on how long. The fence stays in the employee file.
And I, I was gonna say that I actually like that. Because oftentimes, we lose track, or it's not in the person's file. And we've got new trustees, or, you know, new department heads, they don't know what has happened prior to their coming in. I cannot tell you how many times we've said, well, didn't we tell them this is the last time they would be able to do something like this? And there was no documentation. But he gets page 22.
Page 22, the old one or the one with edits?
Section 4.0.
Go by the section, section four.
I have the edited version in front of me.
Okay. Looking at three different versions right now, okay. And that what Jack had just said about, it's in the edited version that was handed to us in January. That's the one, what section is it? 4.4 and all of them?
4.0.
Which is page 22 in the, in the edited version.
Okay, that's what you're talking about.
And so it says, for instance, it's the exact same language, but the adaptation is, "Discipline for category one offenses will stay in the personal file for six months." Yes, and I just think that's helpful.
I agree.
You just want me to import all that and format it?
Can you do that in your spare time?
Yeah.
Editor in chief? If everyone's in agreement.
Yeah, but we have, just as an FYI, we have to. How long is it gonna be for a category three offense? Because there is something for a category one offense is six months. A category two offense is two years, and a category three.
There's nothing. Why don't we just do category one, one year, category two, two years, category three, three years?
Or is it category three?
It's termination.
Termination.
Yeah, well, it's if first.
It's, I, it says, category three offense represents misconduct, which is willful, wanton, or grossly negligent to such degree that continued employment is undesirable.
And the penalty is termination for first infraction, so that's why there's no.
Yeah. We'll keep the files as long as you want them.
The previous employee file.
Right, that's exactly right.
Two years.
But I think that we should, we should up the category one offense to one year, just to have it. What are your thoughts on that?
That's fine.
You've got that change?
I will.
Thank you. All right. So moving right along, pre disciplinary conference. Which is section 4.5 in the old edited version. Just so we're all on the same page, literally. Any changes to this?
The only thing I would add in there. Is it's handled with the department head and or the designee. So and the employee, I would just add in that. You know, some kind of language that the department head will. Communicate with whoever the liaison is. So that they can they can handle it within their their. Their department, but just make sure that the liaison is in the loop.
I don't think that's how it works. I think that pre disciplinary conferences oftentimes. Well, I know for fire department, it's ORC. Outlined by ORC. So we, I think this is probably an adaptation of that so that it's the same. Because the trustees do the the pre disciplinary conference, all three.
That's not what this is saying, is it?
Says, following the conclusion of the pre disciplinary conference, the trustee shall notify the employee of their decision. The it says the township fiscal officer will schedule the pre disciplinary conference with the trustees. All three trustees should know if there's an issue with an employee.
Okay. Oh, this is so this is like, are we talking like this is a pre disciplinary conference for for like. A category three. Because this is not going to.
Anything category one, two, or three, there's you give, they are given an op, they're giving a letter saying this is our concern. This was your grievance. This is category one.
It starts with the department head doing.
A department had determined that the disciplinary action is warranted based on this document. So they say, hey, hey trustees, we're going to go into executive session. I want you to know that we've got a potential disciplinary action on so and so. If we, I think it's a category one, this is what happened. Trustees define which cat which category, and then the fiscal officer sends a pre disciplinary letter to the employee outlining the category. I've done it a few times.
Okay, so we're doing that even for category one?
Yes, all the trustees should know of all disciplinary action always. So it looks like this, the language is almost the exact same as it used to be. Um, the only thing that I would encourage you, Jack, is between one and two and two and three, there's a difference, there's spacing issue. Number one, the type of infraction slash men misconduct. It looks like it's like double spaced.
I already cleaned all that.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any changes in that? Mrs. Swedick, okay, so we're going to move on to grievance policy. Look at us go. Anything in the grievance policy?
I do not.
No.
Yeah, so, okay, so we're going to move on to grievance procedure. I have no changes under grievance procedure.
Just for readability and step two, I said, if the complaint is not resolved to the satisfaction of the complainant.
I don't have a problem with that. I see you did that in three different spots. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I do notice that she's got in step four, three, but then she has five working days. File former written request of the trustees.
I deleted the five. Because it didn't agree with three. You want it to be five?
I think if we look at step three and step two, it's and step one, it's all three days. So I would assume three days would be.
Yeah, keep it three.
Okay, very good. Any other changes under grievance procedure?
No.
Dress code 4.7.
I have no changes.
Here, I don't know which department I was talking to when I have this note here. I have a note that's already in the organizational minutes. Is that specific to service? Do you want to talk about that?
I have the wording on that's. Whenever you reimburse for purchases, so. Normally. And how it's worked in the past, normally the township will provide like cold weather or inclement gear, rain jackets, jackets, safety gear, vest, stuff like that. The boots and stuff and clothing is all been coming out of our allowance or uniforms. So. That you might want to try to clean up a little bit. But normally, like I said, it's I think in the past, they used to buy work boots when they were a union, but we don't now that comes out of our allowance.
How much is your allowance that we just upped it last year, didn't we?
It's 250 every six months.
Okay.
But generally, like, like I said, bibs, rain gear. Uh, the green safety vests with stripes. And then we even had the townships also bought us some striped winter jackets, stuff like that. And generally, when it's wore out, the guys bring it in, we get approval that, okay, the township's going to replace it. So they still have a warm jacket or cold weather gear to be outside.
So what what are you suggesting here?
He's saying that there you can take out the reimbursement because they're getting it out of their allowance, correct? Yeah, well, yeah, that was insane. Because generally how we do it, we go down, our C N L is our vendor down there. She types up a report that I give to Martha for each guy. And you know, that just goes to our clothing allowance every six months. So I took it out. So additionally, a township will provide each service department employee work boots, winter jackets, and pants bibs. Is how I would almost word that is. A for through. Township will provide service department, and I would almost say. An allowance. Incliment gear. Well, yes, an allowance, but township will provide safety and in climent gear. Like gloves, like that stuff that, you know, that we go down to depot and the guys get, we normally get the three pack for like nine bucks or something. And that stuff that like gets ripped up all the time doing trees and whatever, I mean, concrete ruins closed, so it's.
Do you want to say safety and in climent gear such as work boots, winter jackets, pants and bibs?
Yeah, that's fine. I just so long as it's, it's just normal like that. It's. It'd be like a winter jacket bibs. And then like safety vests, stuff like that. And rain, obviously, rain gear. And then everything else we take care of our our through clothing allowance.
Do we want to talk about the clothing allowance in here, saying that it's in the organizational minutes or just leave it alone? Because it's always been there.
It's something we normally discuss and like that every year.
Okay.
So.
Do you want us to keep the word uniforms?
That is something like, that's something that we, me and Jack, and we're talking about. Money wise, what what we're paying and what we could be saving too. So. Like, that's all going to get brought up in that organizational meeting minutes too.
Okay.
So.
So do we, based on your conversations, do we want to keep that word uniforms? In the first sentence of the second paragraph.
The way it is right now, you almost have to until we.
Yeah.
And like once, if we do, I know, like we talked about approving, I want to get that letter out to them as soon as we can.
Okay.
Even after, even afterward, you should still have some type of uniform appearance. It should, you know. Yeah. Which is in a state set by the department.
Right, right.
Okay. So the second paragraph, the township will supply all employees with safety equipment uniforms is required for their departments. Additionally, township will provide each service department employee an allowance for the purchase of work boots, winter jackets, and pants bibs.
No.
No, our clothes, our clothing allowance is towards our clothing, not the, not the winter jackets. Like the township's always provided us bibs, winter jackets, that's the cold, that's all on your inclement gear. Like the rain jackets, winter coat.
The township will provide each service department employee safety and in climent.
Safety's up above. About winter jackets. Work boots, winter jackets, and pants and bibs and other inclement weather gear. Yeah. Is deemed necessary. Okay.
Perfect. The allowances for other gear. All right. Are you okay with the rest of this? Trustee Swedick?
Yes.
Okay, 4.8 safety.
I have no edits.
I have none either.
No.
Okay, 4.9 witness accident.
I would just add in at the end of it, discipline up to and including termination.
Up to?
Up to and including termination.
Well, we have to make sure it co. Relates to the categories. Is that a category three offense?
Someone who's involved in an accident. On township property or involving.
Because if we have the categories for a reason, so to make sure that they are related. Because we can always add it as a category three offense if it's not here.
I'm sure that's something Brian would find out.
Destruction of township property or equipment, including tampering or damaging the clock. So if it's already here. Damaging the time clock. So if it's already here, I would say it's already a category three offense. We don't need to put that there. Number eight, under category.
I don't know. I just think then why even have this failure to make such a report is grounds for discipline. It's just, I think it covers all your bases to have it in there. I mean, it could be a couple of different things. That's why I'm saying up to and including.
We don't want to put that with every single one of the things here, right? Vandalism is going to be the next thing.
I think it's wise to have it in ever. I mean, you have enough category one offenses, you could be terminated for it, right?
But it's. I I see what you're saying. I just the, I think it's clear. It says failure to make such a report is grounds for discipline. I mean, that's that's category three.
I don't think it's a bad idea. Drive home disparity.
When you look at discipline and then go to your categories for what the offenses.
Most people would not.
Yeah, I think.
Most people don't even read it.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me, Jack?
Just on the show, initial the back and say, okay, where do I get my uniform?
Right, next.
Um, do we make that change to it?
Yes.
Vandalism.
That's just saying, we'd really like you to tell us if you see some.
I have no changes to that.
No.
Okay. Um, oh, I'm interesting. I'm looking at the old and it says political activity, which is not in here. Drug free workplace policy.
They're like the same thing.
Maybe it's somewhere else in here. Any changes to drug free workplace policy?
No.
Yes.
What are your changes?
Second paragraph. Unpleased and report to work with illegal drug or their metabolites. I had to look that up. Should we just define that?
Well, enlighten us. What was it?
See, that's that's what I'm saying. I gotta look it up again.
Metabolize. It reminds me of like dextro or something like that.
Any substance produced during metabolism, digestion, or other bodily chemical process. The term metabolite may also refer to the product that remains after a drug is broken down by the body.
So you'd really have to do a dark test now. If they had metabolites in their system.
The drugs gone.
Well, if we leave it in there, maybe people will become educated.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, all the ones who are reading this line by line.
I will leave that in the second sentence, though. Is in direct conflict with the no alcohol policy. There, I don't know that there's any exception. To a consuming alcohol.
Well, we don't have any social or business. And if we did, we would do it here and the D doesn't allow for alcohol. I would, yeah, we can eliminate that whole sentence.
Okay.
Good catch.
Okay, other than that, I have nothing.
Okay. Now, just so we're, we're using the same language in the third paragraph of this drug free workplace policy. It says, any violation of this policy will result, result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. Is that the same language we used in the witness act accident? Failure to make such a report is grounds for discipline up to and including termination.
Yes.
Just so that they mimic each other?
Yes.
See what I'm saying, Jack?
That's what it says too.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Um, so like dumb question, but for the next one. Um, so, like, dumb question, but for the next one. Oh, oh, sorry, are we ready to move on?
Um, I was going to kind of come back to this po- political activity, but go ahead.
For the pre-employment screening, this is all pre-employment, this whole paragraph. So, they actually haven't even been given the manual yet, can we just take it out?
That's what I say.
Because if they fail, they're not getting the manual. We're going to withhold that, a manual for you.
We're not that efficient, we don't give a turn before.
Pre-employment, go ahead.
We do oftentimes hire them and say pending.
You do.
That's what we do in Rob.
Pending your drug test, pending your background check, but they do get this and read it.
That's also a contin- it's a contingency of employment, though, isn't it?
It's in the motion.
Well, just because they say they're going to take the job, they may read it, say, well, now I don't want it, so. It's, it's not a binding contract, but. Might be something you want to leave in there, just from a different perspective, from a new person coming in.
No, I mean, I don't have a problem leaving it in there, I just thought it was, like, why is this in here?
Because I think a new employee should be aware of everything that's in this before they were to accept also. It's no different than when I go to a job, I don't generally say whether I accept or not, because I want to read and learn about that company and/or whatever before I accept.
Oh, you're saying people get this before they've even been, before they've accepted the position?
What I'm saying is, if there's something that you're, somebody you're willing to hire, that you're going after, yeah, you should give this to them. So, they should be able to read it and know what's going on coming in. Why, I don't understand why you wouldn't. That way, they're made aware of what's, what's going on here.
I've just, I've never been given one prior to. Starting work.
Usually onboarding.
Yeah.
Just what I'm saying.
It's probably a good idea.
Part of, part of.
It doesn't hurt to leave it in.
Yeah, it, it doesn't bother me to leave it in.
Because part of, like, an interview is, like, you're interviewing the company as long as, you know, by the company's interviewing you.
Right.
So, everything needs to be put out in front for both parties.
Good point. Okay, this little political activity, I don't even know if we want it, but I noticed that it was missing.
What page is that on?
The old, edited, 6.628, I, like I said, I don't even know if we want it in here, but I just wanted to figure that I would ask over on this section.
Well, 6.6 should be that way, but Martha did this for me, Martha does it backwards, look, it's right here.
What the?
See?
I know she's watching.
It's backwards, okay.
You're Russia, you would go from right to left.
I don't know that we even need it.
I don't think we need those.
I just figured I would ask since we're in this section.
And do you have any?
It's, it doesn't say anything.
It, to me, it's a circle.
Yeah, no, leave it out.
Okay, reasonable cause suspicion, non-safety forces.
I'm okay with that.
I don't have anything.
I, I didn't have anything, but re-reading it. Um, on-the-job injury.
I don't have anything on that.
No.
Random testing position, and this one I did. I actually crossed off, and I don't know how you guys want to do it, it says random testing positions which affect the safety of persons such as law enforcement, but law enforcement really has their own.
But Kumi does not.
But Kumi and Chief don't, so do we want to keep it there?
I think it should be left there.
Yeah.
Okay. And then ser- service department and secretarial, do we want to say administration, or want to keep it secretarial?
Hmm, where does it say that?
Service department and secretarial, that's just law enforcement, service department, and secretarial.
Oh, right there, okay.
Edmund?
And then a secretarial covers zoning. I, I just, it doesn't make sense to what we do here, a lot of this, like we said before, wasn't probably more corporate in nature when she was using her template.
So, just, and administration, or administrative?
Administration.
Administration.
Yeah, and that would apply to zoning also.
Yeah.
I think so, too. That's all I have for that little section. Any other changes to random testing position?
Mm-hmm.
Random testing positions which affect the safety of persons. So, your law enforcement are out on the road. Service department are driving vehicles. I guess, I'm just curious. Why is it secret, I mean, I can see. Someone who's driving a vehicle. And they're being concerned, but I mean.
Well, there's the zoning chief. So, administration would cover that.
Don't drive though.
Yeah, so we changed it to administration. And if for some reason you get in that chief, Suzanne, you're covered. All right, positive test results, any changes there?
I just added in underneath, um, last sentence, a positive drug or alcohol test establishing impairment will result in disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment.
I think Brian Richter's going to have something to say about that. He likes a May. May. But then that's good, that it all has the same language, this will go to him, once we're.
Mm-hmm. That's all I have.
Anything under negative test results?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Swadic?
I just want to step back to random testing, instead of will be required to submit, change that to May, because. Right now, I think the only folks on the random testing list are service. So, we put May in there, and it opens it up for the future.
I like that, will maybe required. Okay.
I have nothing under negative.
Compliance with Federal Drug-Free Workplace Act, any changes there, I think that's pretty standard.
Nothing.
She does say, please note the attached copy of the township's compliance statement.
Acceptable use.
I guess, have the acceptable use.
No, it's like.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it.
This is your market.
Yeah.
We'll come back to it. Round and roll.
Provisions for rehabilitation. Any changes there?
No.
Okay, you have no changes?
No, I do not.
Okay, definitions?
I have no changes.
Are you comfortable moving to 4.12, workplace searches?
Yes.
Okay, I do have a problem with this one, second paragraph. I don't really feel it's necessary to be going into people's purses, or handbags, or lunchboxes. Vehicles.
If it's brought on township property, that's, that's, where that's with driving that paragraph.
So, you'll get a, you'll get a visit from a lawyer.
I can't, I can't see how that's legal.
That, that you cannot, as their own personal stuff, township stuff, yes, personal stuff, no. But you'll lose it in court all day.
Well, this is why it's all going to the prosecutor anyways.
Requires a warrant, is the issue.
I'm going to say.
Now, if you go get a warrant, yes. I actually asked Senator about that, he said he would have a hard time doing that if that were.
Yeah.
So, that is something I would send to the prosecutor.
I would definitely flag those last two paragraphs and ask Brian, I know, can you make a comment in there? Just have Brian just review it, because I'm not sure that we can legally pull that off.
I think that's fair.
Actually, I would just do the whole section, I would flag that whole section. Because it says employees should have no expectation of privacy with respect to township property and/or items stored within township property. So, if I put my purse in my filing cabinet drawer, then it's not mine anymore. Which I. Can't remember the last time I did that, but.
From the way I thought it was worded, anything owned by the township, computers, anything like that, like up in my office, you can go through anything. But when it comes to my personal stuff, it's a definite no. So, even if, say, if your bag was in there, they can take your bag out, but not look through it without a warrant. But they can still look through the office furniture or whatever that the township does on.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, so, I, I get what you're both saying, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, because there's no preface for this, of like, if. If there's reason to believe, like, you know, you're stealing township property or something.
Yeah.
I, I do understand that, because there is no preface.
All I'm saying is, if you go through someone's personal stuff, you, if that person's smart, you'll get a call from a lawyer, and you will get sued. And they will win. You just can't do that with people's personal stuff, people have to go through, cops have to go get warrants all the time to go through people's stuff, like, that's just the way the world is.
Okay, so we're going to have the prosecutor look at this section. I guess. Thank you. Um, internet email and computer use policy.
I don't have anything for this.
It's a long one.
Mm-hmm.
Department, do you have anything on this?
Moving on.
I'm just reading. Um, I, on G for sure, if we're going to change the name of this policy, it says, it, it refers to the names, we'll have to edit that.
On G.
I remembered it. It must be seven. Access to the internet?
Five, six, seven, yeah. Any information about Hinkley Township Policy Manual for Non-Union Department?
That's. She has that all through the document, I deleted it. So, where it said township, it just put the whole thing in.
Okay. And then the confidentiality section of the handbook, we'll come to that, okay, anyone have any changes? Or can we move to 4.14? All right. Personal use of township equipment, which I think was already covered in the last section, but.
I have no changes.
No.
Okay, social media policy.
The first period, same thing, it took policy manual, blah, 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 out. Listen to customer opinion, feedback, and to drive loyalty and advocacy, it took our revenue, we don't do revenue. Next sentence, I changed we to the township. Our employees to support, delete our, put in township.
Okay. Any other changes in that section, on the, on the second paragraph or that section?
No.
Okay. All right, cell phone policy.
I have nothing.
I think you already have a cell phone policy. Yeah, another, this is, that's. But it's not in this one either. All right, any changes to the cell phone policy, we have a separate cell phone policy. Wonder if we can just have Martha provide that for us, so we can take a peek at it and see if it's aligned.
I'm sure Martha would do that.
Yeah, we have a cell phone policy from 2020. I can give you the resolution number, hello?
Hello?
Okay. So, we do have it, I have it here, I cannot even print it for you guys before I. All right. Any changes under that section?
No.
Uh, performance evaluations. Any changes?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay. Public relations.
I do not.
No.
Okay, section five, employee benefits and services, 5.1, general. Any changes to section five?
First paragraph, I took out the policy manual, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Second period, changing the manual. No other changes.
Group health insurance, including Dactyl One Vision. Any changes to this section?
This paragraph, take out policy manual, employees, uh, offers a health group plan for full-time employees. Instead of eligible. Would you prefer eligible?
I do not care one way or the other, they both mean the same thing.
I don't have a preference at the, because I guess the, the point of keeping eligible is if some, for some reason, the policy changes, and it's not a full-time employee that. Ten, like Timon explained, we're, we're thinking ahead, we're talking about a manual, it's going to be here for a long time.
Then I added the sentence, eligible employees wishing coverage must apply for either single or family coverage. The information and the details are available for the township fiscal officer.
Perfect. We do have an insurance committee, so that's right on.
Um, and did you add in Martha's notes, Martha had sent us?
Yeah, group health insurance maintained proposed four paragraphs with the following corrections in the fourth paragraph.
Oh, um, it can't be full-time, it needs to be eligible, because elected officials are not full-time employees.
Good point.
Thank you, Martha.
So, she wants to.
Do that now.
Now, I don't have my phone facing down, so now I see.
She has us in five point. She has us in five point one, two, she wants to delete bargaining union or service department. Because they're not a bargaining union anymore.
Right.
So should we just do representative from the service department and delete bargaining unit, unit after that?
Did you already take that out, Jack? Because I don't see it in here.
No.
Five point two.
The fourth paragraph, the parties agree to establish an insurance committee.
Of at least one.
And one representative from the bargaining unit, at least one representative from the service department, and then just eliminate bargaining unit after that, because that was probably when they had their union. So it's not a bargaining unit anymore, it's just a service department.
It says, and one representative from the non-bargaining unit employees.
So the non-bargaining unit. Should actually be, we already have bargaining units, because there's normally one police officer.
So you want to take out the first one because?
No, we want to keep that because there's one police officer, so there's.
I'm taking, I'm taking for the, where it starts, one representative from the bargaining unit, that's.
Police.
Police.
As well as one representative from the service department. Just service department, and then eliminate bargaining unit, because they're not bargaining on behalf of the union anymore. Then I would keep the rest, one representative from the non-bargaining unit.
Isn't that the service department though?
Well, it could be Suzanne.
Suzanne could be the chief.
Yeah, it could be the chief. And one representative, one representative of the trustees.
So is, let me ask you this, is the insurance committee? It's obviously for everybody. Bargain unit and that.
Correct.
That's what this committee's about.
Exactly, and that's why our negotiations and contracts for police oftentimes were coinciding with the insurance, now it's all over the place, but.
Are two bargaining units.
Yes, because we have the sergeants and we have the patrolmen. But this allows.
It just says at least, so that's okay.
Right, but I would just get rid of bargaining.
Like, where did you, did you edit this?
Which, no.
No, it says.
This is five point two and five point, like, I don't have all that.
Or which one are you looking at?
Well, I hope the one we're on, this has been going up. For the last three meetings, everything else is matched up, except this.
Yeah, I don't know why, it says it right here.
See it?
I don't know why you're doing it.
It's the, you don't, do you have a fourth paragraph in five point two, or do you just, are you missing five point two?
She has two paragraphs.
I have, I have like four sentences in five point two, and then it goes into five point three.
Does it, do you see a dental and vision insurance at all in five point two?
No. See, including dental and vision, but it's not there.
Do you want me to run you a copy of this page while we're on it?
That's okay, I'll just, I'm reading Jack's over his shoulder.
Okay, so this way we have.
So let's take, let's take out. Service department and say two representatives from non-bargaining unit. Want to do that?
No. Because I want, I want the service department to be there.
And they can be one of them.
Your bargaining unit is police, you're, then you've got one service department and then one representative from a non-bargaining unit, which could be.
Service.
Police Chief Setner, it could be Suzanne.
Or service.
Or service, but this at least gives service department a seat at the table.
Okay, I don't care.
Mike, do you have a preference on this? Do you want it to say a representative for, for the, from the service department? Generally, you guys all come in.
I would like one of us to be there.
Yeah, at least one, one designation would be important. Is everyone in agreement?
Use the term a minimum of, what?
It says composed of at least one.
A minimum of.
At least one.
And instead of saying at least one, a minimum of, because that goes with, that matches the language throughout the whole manual.
Composed of at least a minimum of?
Composed of a minimum of one. You gotta look up.
I did.
Okay.
Great Lakes.
Okay. Are we good to move on to dental and vision insurance?
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay, and we are leaving it as a representative from the service department.
It, it says part of the deception insurance committee composed of a minimum of one representative from the bargaining unit as well as one representative from the service department, who was the bargaining unit?
The police.
The police.
I thought you said that that was non-bargaining when I said.
No, the non-bargaining unit was later on, so we've got.
Yeah, so who's in, I said, who's the non-bargaining unit, you said the police or Suzanne.
It can be, because Chief Setner is not covered under the contract, he's not under, he's not covered under the union, he is an employee. A Hinkley Township, as is Kumi.
All right, down vision.
Okay, the township currently provides dental and vision, I mean, I don't have any change there.
I corrected the spelling on information and.
Thank you.
And township.
Eligible is what we're keeping it at, because of trustees. Uh, 5.3 group life insurance.
And that's gonna be eligible also. Not full-time.
Yeah, perfect. And can we say, say for more information, please contact your township fiscal officer instead of clerk?
Well, considering the sense before, it says, see your township for further details. I don't think that essence is even needed.
Okay, that's fine, we'll put fiscal there.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Okay.
Any changes to Cobra?
No.
No.
Workers' comp?
Nope.
Yes.
You're so close, Jack, on a roll.
Employee, the, the, the second half of the paragraph, an employee suffers injury on this connection with the job is usually eligible to receive payment through the insurance township for lost wages.
Second paragraph?
First paragraph, midway down.
I think that whole, rest of that paragraph should just go away.
I would say that that's a Brian Richter.
Well, eligibility save, receive payment through the insurance township, that, I don't know what the hell that means. Should it be township insurance, but?
Yeah, through the township insurance for lost wages. And then I wonder if that is, is that the way the workman's comp works with payments being made directly to the hospital or physician?
That's what I'm saying, we shouldn't even have that in there, it's workman's comp is workman's comp. You file a workman's comp claim, it's outside of here.
Will they have to file it with Martha?
Right, but we, we don't govern the rules or anything with that.
I, I get what you're saying. I hear it. I think it's our fiscal.
Oh, sorry.
Raleigh, who?
I don't know, that was my, that was my watch, which means it's personal, I have not checked.
All right.
Just busy checking my township phone.
Yeah, I would just say that that. I, I would question that, I would question if we need to keep it in there, I would say that's a Brian Richter. It seems like.
Our third-party administrator does workman's comp, we then pay through them.
But do we need to outline?
There are no direct payments.
Yeah. I would ask Brian Richter what he thinks. Because it may be something that we have to say, even though we don't want, feel we need to.
There are no direct payments to a medical provider or employee.
I didn't think there were.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that, that second half of the paragraph should go away. Talks about workman's comp, and then you can file a claim.
Looking to hope, how much of that do you think should go away, Jack?
From an employee who suffers is usually eligible to receive, you could, you want to put that in there, I guess that's okay, but it's. Again, it has to do with the workman's comp laws.
Close to getting those readers, Jack, fighting it. Here we go, page 21 of the old manual.
Refer to the former language, are you looking, okay.
Three point one two. I like. The old language.
What page is that?
Page 21 of the edited version or section 3.12. I haven't even liked calling workman's comp insurance. So what she did was she took our paragraph and she made it the second paragraph, so the old language is the second paragraph.
Right.
And she added this whole other paragraph, so like I said, I, I don't know if this is part of like a new thing you have to put in, that's why I think it's just, just go to, Brian, the last two sentences, I see exactly your point, I just don't know if it's something that nationally or federally we have to state. I don't think it is, but I just don't want to make that determination.
Bag it for Brian.
And I don't know why we're seeing where they should go to Medina Hospital Southwest.
That was in the old one.
No, that was edited in the old one.
No, it was in the old one.
It had a couple of them, but it added, that's what I'm saying, the why, why, why put that in, do you need it?
I think it's just for people who may not be as wise as you and I are, that might be hurt and say, what do I do? You know, you're not thinking clearly, you're in shock. Shock and you, you don't know what to do, so we, we outlined it, I, I mean, that's.
You're in shock and you don't know what to do, so let me refer to the employee manual. You don't even know what hospital to go to, where's my manual?
Once again, you don't know, 10 years from now, you have a different service department head who's brand new and.
I don't think I would ever do that.
You're not restricted to just these.
No, but it's.
Yeah, right.
ASAP Rocky, it's to get, to get people, yeah, to the.
That's what I'm saying, why, why?
The department head needs to know where to send them.
That's what I was saying.
But it does not have to be listed.
Right, it says may proceed.
Martha's never gonna come to a meeting, I guess.
Her fingers are gonna be pretty sore.
Tennis or, okay. Another review.
Okay, so I'm fine with the rest of it. But yeah, I think the last, you know.
I was fine with it before Jack started, is that it?
Okay. You tell me when you're ready.
Go.
Uh, 5.16?
How about 5.6?
5.6, she must, she doesn't need glasses.
I do.
5.6.
I'm in denial.
I do not have anything.
I do not have anything.
Going once, going twice.
It says full-time, is it to be eligible?
Oh, good catch, I actually was looking at that before we got stuck on workman's comp, you're right, it's eligible.
I'm not even saying full-time.
First word.
Clearly, we've established what I need for Christmas.
It feels like Thursday night, and I'm ready for the weekend, it's only Tuesday.
Um, I have no other changes to this, but in 5.7, termination of benefits, the 5.7 is a different font.
I changed that.
Thank you. Any changes to termination of benefits?
No.
So all these say consult the fiscal officer.
Which is why she's.
Put that at the end of every paragraph.
Okay, this is just my opinion, before we start section six, I wouldn't put section six here. I don't think it makes sense, I think that your general and your sick days and all this stuff, your vacation time should be after section. Four.
Why?
Because it's, it's something that you're, you're, and it could even go after three, but it's something that your employees are gonna regularly look at.
I would, it's after benefits, I think it is a benefit.
It's up to you guys, I just, my mind, I've thought, gosh, we have all these policies and procedures and things before you can get.
It's easier to find that, right, it's at the back.
Table of contents.
Okay. Employee leaves.
When you're looking for what hospital you should go to.
Time off, we have 10 minutes. Uh, general, 6.1 general.
I don't have anything.
No.
Is this a full-time anyone? Looks good to me. Sick days, if you're ready to move on to 6.2. Martha had sick days, I agree with the revisions submitted by trustee Swedick, but I don't know what those revisions are. Uh, Martha had sick days. I agree with the revisions submitted by trustee Sutick, but I don't know what those revisions are. And it's your call. It's five fifty now. I don't know if you want to break here and come back and know that we just have section six to finish.
Yeah, I'd rather wrap this up.
And then we have a few minutes before the next meeting to. Just collect ourselves.
Okay.
Would that be okay with you? Okay, trustee Ashel, you're in agreement? All right, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at five fifty-one P M. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second advice, Sutick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect, thank you. And then the meat and potatoes.